Let me call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, so first up, I have approval of the minutes for November 1st, 2022 work session and special meeting, and then November 15th, 2022, regular meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Nope, okay. So first up, I'm looking to set the 2023 reorganization meeting and the January Town Board work session for Tuesday, January 10th, 2022. Sorry, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, now are all these meetings going to be set for Tuesday in the same format we're doing, and we've had some discussions?
So what will be happening is it is going to be the second and third Tuesdays of the month. You know, I've heard your, you know, we've had some discussions about the format, where we basically have the work session, and then we have a special meeting to adopt the warrant. So those concerns are noted. So for next year, we'll certainly look to scale back the amount of, you know, items that we're considering in the work session, and you'll look to move them to the town board meeting.
Okay, it means it was more concerned because residents have expressed that we have a work session, and then we're immediately voting on them, so they, we don't have the same time that we used to have to actually listen to what constituents have to say about certain things. That's why I brought it up to you.
No, that's, I mean, look, I've not heard that from a single constituent, but, you know, I am, you know, happy to take that into, you know, under advice.
So we're starting at seven for the?
Yeah, seven o'clock, yes.
Second, on the third Tuesday.
Yes, no, and so obviously before we have the reorg meeting, we will put forth the same packet that we put forward every year. I'm also going to be looking to meet with council members just to sort of discuss what their liaison assignments are going to be for next year, to see if they want changes, keep the same. We also, you know, we have a new board number two that we have to consider, so I'll look to do that over the next, what, two, three weeks that we have?
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Scott?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, so next up, we have a resolution to schedule a, to schedule and set a public hearing for the Restore New York grant application for the proposed redevelopment project that's at 317 and 325 Main Street. This is also going to set forth, there's certain notice requirements according to Empire State Development, where this has to be published in either a daily for three consecutive days or a weekly for three consecutive weeks. So this is going to set forth when we're doing that. I would propose that we have that public hearing on January 17th. Let's move that away from the work session, you know, just to allow more time. I think it would be too much to have during that night, so we'll look to have the public hearing that night on this, on January 17th. So where, is there any questions on this? Okay, so whereas the town of Cornwall is submitting an application for Restore New York grant for the proposed redevelopment of certain real property located at 317 Main Street and 325 Main Street in the town of Cornwall, tax lot numbers 24-2-5.1 and 24-2-2.12, and whereas in order to submit the said grant application, it is necessary for the town board to hold a public hearing on it, and whereas under the Restore New York Grant Program, notice of public hearing as well as a list of all properties submitted for the grant must be published on three consecutive days in a daily newspaper in advance of a public hearing, and whereas the current deadline for submission of applications for Restore New York Grants is January 27th, 2023, now therefore be resolved as follows: That the town board does hereby schedule a public hearing on the said Restore New York Grant Application for January 17th, 2023 at 7:00 PM; that the notice of said public hearing as well as a list of all properties submitted for the grant shall be published on three consecutive days in the daily newspaper in advance of a, of a public hearing. For purposes of providing a for said notice, the Times Herald Record shall be designated as a paper of record for the town of Cornwall. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
And just to note also, Josh, although for legal purposes, in terms of meeting the grant requirement, this will be published in a daily newspaper, the Times Herald Record, the town will also be publishing it in the local, because people tend to get their information from that, and that will be.
Yeah, I mean, we decided the best way to get the word out locally was the local, but to meet the requirement, the Times Herald Record.
Right, so it'll be a clean paper.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so next up, we have a resolution authorizing the town to accept the Orange County Bridge easements. As you know, we are, next year, the town's going to be replacing, what is it, Main Street Bridge Number One? Oh, no, sorry, Number Two, Number Two. In order for them to do the work, they need both a temporary easement, which is going to allow them to stage construction equipment in Triangle Park, and then after that's done, they will need another permanent easement, you know, for the bridge. So, and for that, they're going to provide a payment in the amount of $13,736. So we're going to get something out of this. Well, besides a new bridge, that could cost millions of dollars, but, and so, I don't have to read the county easements, do I?
You don't read the easements.
Okay, I choose the resolution, okay. All right, so whereas the town has received a request from the county of Orange to grant a permanent easement of 267 square feet on a portion of certain real property owned by the town on Main Street identified on the tax map as Section 24, Block 1, Lot 2.3, to be used by the county in reconstructing an existing bridge on Main Street here and after, Main Street Bridge Number Two, and whereas the town has further received a request from the county of Orange to grant a temporary work easement of 1,962 square feet on a portion of said property to be used in reconstructing Main Street Bridge Number Two, and whereas the town highway department and town engineering consultant report that the permanent easement and temporary work easement sought by the county are not necessary for the town to maintain, and whereas the town board has to forward a draft agreement which it will grant the requested permanent easement and temporary work easement to the county in return for the payment of $13,736, a copy of which is attached here too, now therefore be resolved as follows: That the town board hereby agrees to grant the requested 267 square feet permanent easement and the requested 1,962 square foot temporary work easement, subject to a permissive referendum, and two, that the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms therein, and three, this resolution will set a 30-day period for electors of the town for approval or disapproval of the said agreement with the county. If no petition is signed and acknowledged by electors of the town protesting against said resolution and requesting that said resolution is submitted to the electors of the town for their approval or disapproval within 30 days after the date of adoption thereof, then said resolution shall become effective. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, so next up, we have a resolution which would authorize the town to enter into a memorandum of agreement with Jewish Family Services for the Friendly Visitor Program. As you're aware, last year, we had entered into a similar arrangement for $5,000. This year, the town board has discussed this, and we believe that going with the $10,000 contract, which is, we've authorized in the FY23 budget, this will allow us to add an additional outreach person for five hours a week, and we, you know, we really think this, you know, will help us sort of, you know, build on the program and really provide better service to the seniors under this program. And so, can I get a, so whereas the town of Cornwall has received a memorandum of agreement between Jewish Family Services and the Town of Cornwall Friendly Visitor Program to outline the responsibilities of each organization for the year 2023, and whereas the town wishes to enter into the agreement with JFS, now therefore be resolved as follows: That the town board does hereby agree to enter into said agreement, and that the town supervisor is authorized to execute the same and any documents necessary to carry out its terms. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Steve, I noticed in, on page two of the agreement, I don't know if this is just a typo, and this might be similar to the agreement from last year. It was to, you go down where it says, "Provide intakes, home assessments on all appropriate neighbors and requesting services." This is the service with the additional fee that we're paying that they're supposed to be doing.
I don't see them provide intakes.
It's where the Town of Cornwall Friendly Visitor Program agrees to.
Right, starts out with maintain the town.
It's come, all right, so from the middle page, go down to the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven bullet.
Oh, perform intakes, home assessments on all appropriate neighbors requesting services.
Yes, that's more of a professional skill, and that's what they're, they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, no, we, we will, I mean, so.
I don't know if it's just a mistake, because that's part of the.
They're providing five hours, you know, a week, and when we have our sort of kickoff meeting in January, we'll address, you know.
Okay.
Well, I think that it's appropriate for the board to approve the contract with the amendment, that that be, that bullet point be moved up to above the Town of Cornwall Friendly Visitor Program, or actually probably eliminate it, no?
We could.
Do you want to eliminate it?
We could, you know, we could certainly eliminate it, and then we could.
Just point it out to them and say, this is your responsibility.
All right.
We could ask them about that.
Well, let's eliminate it for now, you can add.
Yeah, no, we can always add it back in via an addendum to the.
So what I'd suggest then is, I think the board just voted to approve this.
Yes.
Yeah.
So let's have a motion to amend that resolution.
Sure.
To approve the contract with the removal of that particular bullet point, the seventh one down there.
Okay, can I get a motion to amend the contract eliminating the bullet point, uh, under Town of Cornwall Friendly Visitor Program agrees to bullet point number, number seven, which states, "Perform intakes, home assessments, and all appropriate neighbors requesting services."
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, so next up, let me just grab this here. The board should have an additional, do you have the additional resolution for the iWork software that eliminates?
Yes.
Okay, so let me just, yeah, okay. So, as you're aware, the building department is going to be moving to iWork to replace the current building software management system that it has, that, that is outdated and, you know, by decades at this point, and the risk is that if the current provider of that software system is no longer able to service it and provide, provide updates to it, that the town could be stuck with having its information stuck in the old system, not able to transfer it over to a new one. And so we're looking to sort of move in, you know, into the future on this. This is going to be able to provide much more, you know, streamlined services, there's going to be, this is really going to help them to kind of keep up on, you know, the work in the department to track things. The Village of Cornwall and Hudson recently adopted this, the Town of New Windsor recently adopted this, and after, you know, talking to the building department and being in on the training and talking to them, I, I think this is the right direction. It also happens to be, you know, some other comparable systems, like SAS and other larger systems, you're looking at 20, $30,000 a year. So this seems to be the right move for the Town of Cornwall.
In regard to the changes, Josh?
Yes.
Can I just please?
Sure.
The village recently entered into this exact same contract with iWork, and so when we drafted up our version, they said, well, they should all be the same and in line with one another, which I can't disagree with. So we have now the same contract that the village has, or you will if you approve this, with iWork, a three-year term to provide the services to the building department.
Okay, perfect. So whereas the Town of Cornwall has received a proposal from iWork Systems, Inc., to provide computer software and services to the town building department, and whereas the town wishes to enter into a contract accepting the iWork proposal, a copy which is attached here too, now therefore be resolved as follows: That the town board does hereby approve the contract for provision of computer software and services to the town building department by iWork with the following amendments: A, paragraph seven entitled "Cancellation" shall be deleted and replaced with the following text: Number seven, termination, either party may cancel this agreement without cause if the terminating party gives the other 60 days written notice. Should the town terminate any, any application during any year for which the service fee has been paid in full, the town shall not be required to pay a fee for the next year's, next term services. Upon termination, iWork will provide the town with an electric copy of all customer data within three to five business days at no cost to the town. Paragraph 11 entitled "Applicable Law and Venue" shall be deleted. Number two, that the town board authorizes the supervisor to execute the same and any documents necessary to carry out the terms of the same. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, so next up, we have the resolution for the Central Hudson Streetlight Acquisition Agreement. So, you know, as you're aware, we've been kind of working on this now for well over, well, actually more than a year. So we've, we've finally gotten to the place where, you know, essentially, the next steps are going to be for the town to, you know, if it so chooses, to approve the Streetlight Acquisition Agreement from Central Hudson, and then it goes, we have to send over, I actually spoke to Jason Malisa today from Central Hudson, he wants two cut, two, two packages, goes to him, they forward it to the PSC, the PSC then gets 90 days to review upon the completion and approval of the Public Service Commission, it comes back, and then a, a closing date is scheduled. Upon that date, the town then has to pay the, the terms, and so just to make everyone aware of this, it may, I think, you know, I think it says like 264 something thousand dollars as the, as the net book value.
Yeah.
That is actually not going to, so just so everyone's clear, that this, you know, since we last had this in July, the price has maybe gone up less than 1%. And up until the, the time of closing, they can change the price on this. So, you know, I wouldn't expect it to be much, but we have to be aware of that, obviously, but, I mean, this, this is just the process, so, you know, so we'll send it off, and then over the next, and then over the next three months, well, really, starting in January, the town board has to come back to consider the real-term energy proposal, because that's who we're currently considering, to do the streetlight conversion and the smart, the, sorry, smart sensor, getting it wrong, additions, as well as some other stuff, so we'll be looking at this back in January, because we have to make sure that we have real term or whoever it's going to be, you know, queued up to go the second that this comes back and we close. So, is there any questions? No? Okay. So if I could get, so let me see, so we've got, whereas the Town of Cornwall has received a proposed purchase and sale agreement of street lighting facilities by and between the town and Central Hudson Gas and Electric Corporation, and whereas the town wishes to enter into the said contract for purchase of streetlight heads in the town, now therefore be resolved as follows: That the town board does hereby approve the said contract, that the town board authorizes the supervisor to execute the same and any documents necessary to carry out the terms of the same. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, so next up, we have a resolution for the Office of the Aging lease agreement for the county dining program. This is, contracts attached here, this is something we do every year, year in and year So whereas the county of Orange on behalf of the Orange County Office for the Aging has presented the 2023 lease agreement for the senior dining program for the elderly between the county and the town, and whereas it is in the best interest of the town to enter into the agreement with the county, now therefore be resolved as follows: That the town board hereby agrees to enter into the annexed agreement between the county of Orange and the town for the 2023 senior dining program for the elderly, that the town board hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute the agreement and forward the same to the county of Orange. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, so let me just, on this next one, I just, I just want to, this is the resolution for New Windsor dispatch agreement, so I, I just want to, so, just getting into this, so, you know, to date, the town of, so since we've gone with New Windsor EMS, they've had 100% response time in both providing ALS and PLS to town and village residents. After the transition took place, you know, back in June into, into July, the Town of Cornwall, Village of COH, and Town of New Windsor, they had a meeting to discuss the best way to dispatch services. Police chiefs, New Windsor EMS, and reps from each municipality, they determined that the way to make this run the smoothest was to have Base Five, which is New Windsor PD, to dispatch all EMS calls coming from the Town of Cornwall, Village of COH. This would eliminate the need for officers to carry additional radios, which would incur in equipment cost, possibly exceeding the value of this contract. This would add to the, um, to the response time, it would create confusion. In exchange for providing this service, the Town of New Windsor has asked to be compensated with the terms being laid out in the MOA. EMS service is currently paid for out of the general fund, which village residents pay taxes into. The cost of the MOA for dispatch with the Town of New Windsor is in the FY23 adopted budget, and is coming out of the general fund as well. And so county EMS has told New Windsor EMS that the current arrangement is working, and that they see no need to change at this time. Michael Biggs, Chief of Operations for New Windsor EMS, is also, he briefed the board on this at a meeting in October, when there was questions that were brought up about this, and he basically said that changing this would increase response times and could cost lives. The current arrangement is as follows, and has been happening since they took over. During the day, a call that reaches the Town of Cornwall Dispatch is automatically routed to Base Five by a live person over in the police department over to Base Five, which is New Windsor PD. New Windsor PD then dispatches EMS throughout the town and village of Cornwall. Once the 911 system is turned over after Town of Cornwall Dispatch leaves for the day, 911 automatically forwards all calls for EMS in the Town of Cornwall and CMS to Base Five for dispatch. This ensures a seamless process and reduces response times. If a police officer in, in the Town of Cornwall or COH needs to call an ambulance, their radios are programmed to speak to Base Five. Fire service is the same way, I'm told. Before having this agreement put in, put together, I spoke to the town attorney and our labor attorney to make sure that there were no issues with us doing this. This arrangement was given the green light. If we opt out of the current arrangement, which will cost us $6,000 prorated for the six months of 2022, and $13,000 for 2023, this will add additional radio equipment costs. More importantly, this will reduce our response time and will invite chaos into a well-oiled machine that is providing the best EMS service in Orange County. So I would ask the board, just, you know, sort of considering what I've just, you know, laid out, I think this happens to be the best way forward, and I would ask the board to approve this. We can certainly, if we happen to see that this is not working out in the future, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, we could always try to, you know, opt out of this in the future.
There's a cancellation provision, it's mutual, like, yeah, there's a cancellation provision.
So, are there any questions before I?
Yes, I do. I know you and I had some discussions this afternoon. I didn't, I wasn't aware of the $6,000 that, that was prorated, so this is like a total, I know, we spoke $19,000. My question is, we pay the county, right, for 911 services, and I understand that, yes or no? Explain.
So the, well, we don't have a separate contract.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get you to clarify.
So, obviously taxpayers pay county taxes, and that helps to fund it, but if we don't have a separate, we're paying 911 with a separate contract and a similar amount.
Okay.
So it's, it's just paid through taxes.
All right, I was just making sure we weren't duplicating costs.
Which we'd have to pay anyway, because they have to dispatch police.
Okay, so this is just for EMS, it would not affect our police dispatch?
No, not at all. No, and in fact, I mean, really, I mean, when I, when, you know, after hearing that basically every police car has a radio that can talk to Base Five and the fire department, and this would just basically cause all kinds of issues, where we'd have to like swap out radios, it would just, you know, it would, it would cause, so.
All right.
Is there any other questions?
No, you answered my ticket.
Okay.
It's a good $6,000 spend.
Okay. So whereas the Town of Cornwall receives emergency medical services through the New Windsor Volunteer Ambulance Corp., NuVAC, and whereas the most efficient and practical way to dispatch NuVAC for EMS service in the Town of Cornwall is through the dispatch service provided by the Town of New Windsor, and whereas the Town of Cornwall and the Town of New Windsor have negotiated and prepared a proposed intermunicipal agreement for provision of EMS dispatching services by the Town of New Windsor, a copy of which is annexed here too, and whereas the town board wishes to enter into the said agreement, now therefore be resolved as follows: That the town board does hereby approve the intermunicipal agreement for provision of EMS dispatching services by the Town of New Windsor, and that the town board authorizes the supervisor to execute the same and any documents necessary to carry the, the terms of the same. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. Okay, so, okay, so next up, we have a quote here from Advanced Testing for the Town of Cornwall Continental Road Culvert Contract 1B. And so this is basically going to be for, it's for a bearing capacity inspection, which they're going to have to do.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
A bearing capacity.
Bearing capacity.
Yeah, yeah, I have to make sure that I can, you know.
Testing the dirt.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah. And so this is, this is the firm that MHE has recommended to us. It, it's going to be, it looks like, they're going to need three days of services at a rate of $880 a day. This will be, this will be billed to the FEMA contract.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I'm, so obviously.
You say eighty?
Sorry, yeah, it's $880 for a full day rate, they believe it's going to take three days of testing. I mean, that, that's what they say, we don't really know until they get there and they, they start their process. So if I could get a motion to approve the invoice from Advanced Testing for the Town of Cornwall Continental Road Culvert Bearing, Bearing Capacity Testing at the full day rate of $880 per day?
So moved.
Okay.
So moved.
Um, can I have a question before? The professional engineer, is that from their company? At the rate of 225 an hour?
Yes.
Are they reassigned?
Yes, yes, sorry, so they, they have a bearing inspector that's going to be doing the work, and then if they happen to need the engineer, but, yes, correct.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. All right, so next up, this is probably one of the, I'm very pleased to be, you know, building out our building department, which I think is, you know, long overdue, and I think it's really going to help, I think code enforcement's one of the most important things we do in the Town of Cornwall, and that we need to be doing more of it, and so this is going to allow us to really, I think, make the town safer, as well as provide better service to residents, so I'm very pleased to be appointing John Hand as a full-time Assistant Building Inspector to the Town of Cornwall. I think this is a really good move that we're doing here. Are there any questions before I?
When's he started?
January 3rd.
January 3rd, okay.
Yeah. So whereas the Town of Cornwall has an available position of employment as full-time Assistant Building Inspector in its building department, and whereas the town has advertised the, the position interviewed candidates to fill in accordance with the requirements of the with the requirements of the New York State Civil Service Law, and whereas the town board has decided to offer the position to John Hand, and Mr. Hand has stated his willingness to accept the position, now therefore be resolved as follows, that the town board hereby approves hiring John Hand as a full-time assistant building inspector at the salary of seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars, uh, per year, effective January third, 2023, that the town supervisor is authorized to execute any documents necessary to carry out the provisions of this resolution. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. All right. Um, so next up, we have committee reports. Um, uh, let's start with Carrie.
I don't have any, any reports from either of the-
Okay.
-town government.
Okay. Uh, Jenny?
Uh.
We're going different.
Yeah, let's go with the drawing, yeah.
All right. Um, well, as far as, uh, the lighting, um, I'm appreciative the board supports the acquisition. Um, the next step, I know we're gonna be talking about the benefits between the types of financing. Um, I did reach out to Supervisor Sweetin and Mayor New Hard, who are, and county legislator Barry Chaney, they are extremely pleased with the process so far with, uh, real term, and they very much support it. Uh, they talked to me a little about their financing, you might want to reach out to them, how they did it. And, uh, village mayor, um, Ben Harder is the same. Um, they're also, the only thing that's different is that Cornwall is the first municipality to be working with Central Hudson, um, to the process for, for the steps of where we are. Um, they've worked with ONR. Um, so that's lighting.
Okay.
Uh, Firth Cliff Water, I spoke with John Fair, um, basically, uh, they recently replaced two meters on Route 32. Uh, he did share his very pleased with the roads being repaved. Um, there was one, um, valve that was, um, covered, but, um, he was able to, uh, paint them, uh, put some paint on it and to market. But he also told me, in terms of inventory, about ninety percent of the valves are actually identified-
Okay.
-um, in the district, which is a good thing. Um, the senior advisory committee, uh, they met on, um, November twenty-eighth. We started the food collection drive, which runs, uh, until January tenth. Um, I'm pleased to say that, um, the box was fill and, full, and, uh, it was empty last week. ALS is doing inventory, our chair of the advisory committee. Um, our next meeting is going to be January twenty-third, but I know we're gonna be really busy, um, in terms of coming up with some goals for next year. So I want to say that the seniors are very appreciative of the activities that they've tried to do, and, uh, I'm very pleased to see a lot of more engagement out from it, yes, this year. All right, and then we have, sorry, a lot, senior panel, um, Shore Road, uh, there's been a lot of, uh, maintenance, uh, this past month, a lot of them, you know, cleaning out the scumbusters, uh, the filters, the sewer line replacement that's going on at Tamar Lane. Um, as far as the, um, the flow, uh, the, the BOD, the bio, you know, biochemical oxygen demand and the total suspended solids, everything is within permit limits. Um, moving to the Firth Cliff Sewer Plant, um, again, they're dealing with cleaning secondary tanks. Um, again, they're, um, dealing with a lot of removal of rags again and debris, um, from, especially off the mechanical aerators, so that, that seems to be a continual problem. Um, they did the quarterly, uh, cleaning in, uh, pump station number one, the terrace, which I know has been also an issue. Um, they cleaned troubled spots, um, on the collection system, two main lines that went off. That, um, plant, in terms of flow, BOD, and solids, they're all within, uh, permit limits. And I think the last committee that I, oh, well, the lighting, you don't, you know, the other, only one was the, uh, Main Street beautification committee. Um, as you know, we did a lot of work, uh, preparing for the, um, the event that we had on December fourth. I want to thank the entire committee for, um, really taking the time on some pretty cold days to get things ready. Our next meeting is, uh, January, um, oh gosh, ninth. And, uh, a lot of that's gonna be going through priorities, goals, setting them for next year. And I think that's it.
Okay, great. Uh, councilwoman Michael Rosi?
Yes. Well, it's, uh, she reports, um, we've been working with, uh, town supervisor and deputy supervisor myself, um, the, um, pool engineer, um, and town engineer to basically come up with a draft master plan for Riverlight Park, and, um, that will be presented to the board, uh, early next year. So we're hoping to accomplish that. And, um, also working with the pool engineer, um, to, um, figure out what we can include in the, um, um, mapping and the area of the Riverlight Park, or what we can actually, um, subtract or change. So those are the design, basically, um, come up with a possible design, uh, new design for the Riverlight Park. Um, let's see, what else we have? Um, oh, and, um, we're also working on to figuring out the best way to proceed, uh, with the replacing the town, uh, town hall park, uh, the playground, with the, uh, money that Senator Scoopus has, uh, provided for us. Uh, there's a bit one, I believe, uh, deputy supervisor can add a few more, if you wish so, if you do. Uh, on a CCAC, uh, Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council has presented the local tree laws to the board, as you know, and awaits its possible alter, alterations in revised version from the planning. So CCAC will be, uh, meeting second Wednesday of the month in 2023, and January eleventh will be the first meeting. And, um, the other small change, um, we have moved, they have moved, pardon me, um, the annual, uh, meeting, uh, which is a celebration from December, uh, each year to April on Earth Day, which we thought it would, it is a good adjustment, um, whether it's nicer and people want to be outside. On the youth committee, um, the New Year's Eve committee had, um, asked, uh, the youth committee to participate in this year's, uh, ball drop. Um, it was very kind of them to include the youth committee. However, since we only are ten days away from the, uh, ball drop at the village, um, they politely declined, we couldn't come up with, uh, fast plans. So we are gonna be working, the youth committee is gonna be working on, um, having, um, a special, um, presentation for the kids for a ball drop, so, for the next year. So we have plenty of time to plan it and execute. And youth committee will, um, set their meeting dates after, for the 2023 after the Christmas. So that's, that's for mine.
Okay, great. Um, councilman McCarty, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, nothing, except, uh, we can start meetings with the water committee, uh, sometime after the holidays in January, more, more to come.
Okay, great. Uh, deputy supervisor Gold, is there anything you'd like to add?
Um, two things real quick. Uh, we did get some preliminary, very preliminary, um, playground designs, and, which we, quite frankly, we haven't spent a lot of time on yet because of everything else that's been on the agenda. Economic Development Advisory Committee's November meeting, uh, had to be canceled because the chairman was unavailable. Um, we are having a, I'll call it a meeting, at, uh, Storm King Lounge and Fair on Thursday evening. I understand there will be an agenda other than eating and drinking, so I'll be happy to report on that as well.
Thank you. Um, so as far as, uh, New Windsor Emergency Medical Services, uh, for the month of November, um, we've had three hundred and sixty-eight total dispatches, uh, one hundred of calls recovered, three hundred and eighty-five patient encounters, two hundred and seventy-five responses in the town of New Windsor, fifty-eight responses into the town of Cornwall, seventeen into the village of Cornwall, uh, mutual aid, we had ten town of Newburgh, uh, zero city of Newburgh, three Woodbury Cornwall unit covered, one Highland Falls covered by the Cornwall unit, two Bloom Grove. The average response time, uh, for New Windsor is seven minutes and seventeen seconds. The average response time for the town of Cornwall is six minutes and thirty-three seconds. The average response time in COH is six minutes and eighteen seconds. Uh, New Windsor units have responded to second calls in Cornwall, while the, uh, while the Cornwall unit has responded eight times to third calls in New Windsor. Um, so far for the year, we've had three thousand four hundred and forty-seven calls for the year, no vehicle accidents. Um, the first public Narcan training was very successful. I want to say we had about twenty people there. I know they're gonna be looking to partner with the library on the Narcan training. We're certainly gonna look to do more at the Cornwall ambulance building. Um, you know, look, certainly, um, I was kinda shocked when Michael Bigg gave me the stats for the number of times that we're administering this, as well as the number of deaths and overdoses we're getting. It's really kinda scary, um, and sad. So I'm glad that we're at least providing the service. So if, you know, look at any time a resident, if they want to call up, uh, New Windsor EMS, they can call up, they can ask for a Narcan kit, uh, they have them on hand, comes in a little blue bag. Um, it's not really hard, I, I, I attended the training myself. So certainly, parents and teachers and people that are around kids, really just anyone, I mean, if you want one, 'cause you want to save a life, call up New Windsor EMS and ask for a bag. And, you know, someone will show you how to use it. Um, so that was New Windsor EMS. Um, the Cornwall Police Department, um, calls for service, uh, for the month of November, six hundred and twenty-eight miles driven, seven thousand two hundred and seventy-six. Uh, total miles driven for the year so far, seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and four. Traffic and appearance tickets issued, thirty-two. Motor vehicle accidents reported, thirty-four. Three arrests were made, one nine-one-one hangup, sixteen alarm calls, eleven ambulance requests, seven animal complaints, thirteen disabled vehicles, seven domestic incidents, one parking complaint, five suspicious vehicles, twelve house checks, nine assist other agencies. And then obviously probably the biggest news, in case you haven't heard it yet, our longtime, uh, police chief is retiring, and the town board is tasked with finding his replacement, um, which we will be taking up, um, right away. Um, so that, that's really probably the most important thing we have to do in January, is to select the next police chief for the town of Cornwall, you know, among other things. Um, uh, let me see here. Um, just, I guess, just some sort of news here. Um, you may have noticed all kinds of activity out on Continental. Um, folks live on the other side of that, what used to be that, you know, uh, you know, former bridge or culvert that got washed out in Hurricane Ida. For the past week or so, that's been reconstructed. Um, according to the construction schedule, um, tomorrow, they're finishing putting in the guide rails, they're going to be, um, finishing up paving, there's some other, like, site restoration work they have to do. And then, um, the town engineer, he's gotta go out there and look at it. There's some other stuff we have to do, but we hope to turn it over to residents before Christmas. Um, which is, you know, they've been without that for well over a year, and, you know, quite frankly, it's dangerous to have to, you know, you know, come in and out of nine W. So I know, you know, and also for town employees, for, you know, for the garbage truck and for, you know, emergency vehicles. So we're really happy this is, and the best part about it is that FEMA is picking up the cost of about ninety-five percent of this. We did have a five percent cost sharing that we had to do, it's just the way it is. But FEMA's picking this up, so, um, that's great. Um, and then, as far as the holiday, uh, lighting competition that we've done for the past couple of years, um, we are still doing that. Um, we had a few illnesses throughout different town departments, so we just got the, I think there's like eight people that submitted. We do have, uh, board members have the packages, and I'm gonna ask that you go out and look at them over the next, you know, week before people take them down after the holidays. And then, at our January meeting, we'll announce who we're gonna, uh-
Who's the board?
Yeah, exactly. Um, so, if there's nothing else, um, is there any public comment? Yes?
Nancy Ryan, um, just wanna remind the board of something that I brought up in June through email, a couple of emails. There, there is no sign that says Main Street at the intersection of Main and Academy. Um, I never would have noticed this, except I had some caregivers helping my, my mother at this point in time, and they brought it to my attention, what, even though they were using GPS to find her residence on Main Street, um, I think they were confused if there was no sign that actually said Main Street. And I know Main Street is county and Academy is state, so I don't know who's really responsible for this. It does say Business District, but, um, I think it would be in the best interest if at some point, even if it's not the springtime, because freezing and all that stuff, that's fine, but I just think that that, um, would be a good idea for the town to look into that, to get that some-
Yes, what was located from the outside?
Oh, I'm sorry, Main Street and Academy, right across from NEMA. Um, so there's no sign that says Main Street, which, again, I never noticed, and if these women didn't point this out to me and just say, you know, there's no sign, I never, ever would have even realized it.
I don't have time, could have used to be one.
Yeah, yeah, I think it probably was, and that's what, so, I think my neighbor said that.
It wasn't that long ago.
No, I don't think, I remember what else.
Um, the other thing also, and I'm not quite sure, um, who's responsible, but the, the street light at the triangle intersection, at Academy, the nine W North and South, sometimes works and sometimes doesn't. Um, I'm on and off those ramps a lot, um, probably too much, but, um, it's, sometimes that light works and sometimes it does not. Um, I'm not gonna stop and find, I actually looked a couple of times for like a pole number and there isn't, or there might be and I just couldn't see it there. Anyway, that, it's, it's a safety issue is my concern with that. Um, and I don't know whether there's a sensor thing, or, because it does work sometimes and sometimes it's pitch dark there, so I, maybe somebody could look into that also.
So Academy and nine W, are you heading?
Oh, well, wherever that triangle is, onto both ramps.
Just that one piece, okay.
Yeah, that one piece, that, there's a light there, and again, sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, so, you know, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, look, in the future, that's actually gonna be our slash real term, whoever the provider's issue is to-
Right.
-to fix that, but in the meantime, that's still Central Hudson.
Might be something that to wait on and, and let-
Oh, yeah, no, well, I'll, I'll talk to, to Tommy and to Jason Malisa about that. Um, yeah, actually, in fact, I, I forgot to mention today, which I'll just do real quick. So I had, there's a yearly meeting, um, Tim actually joined me for this, 'cause he was meeting with me. There's a yearly meeting now that Central Hudson's required to have with municipalities that the PSC put into place. And so I had this meeting and I just went over like, I think, ten different topics, you know, just going down the list from like, you know, number one being storm safety and management, and what to do if there's issues during, you know, uh, inclement weather, all the way down to like, street lighting and LED conversions and, you know, so it was, it was good. And I will say, I mean, at least on the municipal side of things, we have a good relationship with them. I can't speak for the, um, residential billing side, unfortunately, but as far as, um, you know, the relationship on the, uh, on the municipal side, we're always able to get, you have to be able to point of contact, that I can call a cell twenty-four seven if there's an issue. So that side is good. Um, and, uh, you know, they were concerned this coming, you know, weekend, that we're gonna have this, um, you know, really, uh, you know, essentially a flash freeze, um, which could, you know, result in down power lines and, uh, loss of electricity. So that's something I hope we don't get Christmas weekend. Um, but, uh, sorry, back to, um, public comment? Nope, okay. Um, let me just, so we're actually gonna do interviews, too?
Well, for interviews, I think we'd be going into, um, closed session to discuss matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspensions.
Yep. And then I'll, I'll be the other one, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, can I get a motion to approve going into executive session for discussion of matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or, or removal of a particular person or corporation employed, or who may become employed by the town? This is gonna be to interview, um, a few people for vacant committee positions. And then can I also get a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a municipal corporation, in particular, the village's provision of water service to the town, and to seek confidential advice of, of council? Um, can I get a vote in favor to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. And can I get a motion to invite Mayor Galliano in to attend executive session? And deputy supervisor Wen Gold?
So moved, yes.
Second.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosi?
Yes.
Mr. McCarty?
Yes. Okay. Oh, sorry. Um, all right, so we're gonna go up to executive, uh, we'll close that later.
Yeah, the board won't be taking any action.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah.